Good evening. Please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during our meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance. And if you would, please give it to the city clerk and the speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. So at this time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting for November 12th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Jerry Bowen of Heritage Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by community member Richard Leon. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing.
Father, we do thank you for your love for us. We thank you especially this weekend, thinking of our veterans. Thank you for the men and the women that have served our country and have been willing to continue to defend our freedoms. And Father, we pray tonight for our City Council. Pray for our mayor, Mayor Protam, and for the City Council members. We pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment and insight in the matters that are before them this evening, that the decisions that will be made will be for the enrichment of our community. And Father, we pray for those community members that have come tonight to express their concerns or their insights on the different issues, that you would bless them and their time. And then, Father, we pray that all that will be done tonight, that it would be something that you would be pleased with. Thank you for your love for us. Thank you for sending your son for us. Now we pray that you'd bless this meeting. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nice states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and a visible modality and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bowen. Thank you Richard Leon. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protam Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few special presentations. We'll begin with the first one, which is a new employee to introduce. It's our Planning and Development Services Director and our Assistant City Manager will be introducing him.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, Cynthia Fortune. Our new Planning and Development Services Director is Mr. Greg Sujiuchi, and he'll be saying a few words after my introduction. Mr. Sujiuchi comes from the City of Rosemead. He was the Assistant City Manager there, and he has various planning, building and safety code enforcement experience. So he brings a lot with him to the table, and we believe that his skills, knowledge, and abilities will be an asset to this city.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to serve your community out here in the City of Grand Terrace. I had a great and memorable time. I think I mentioned to one of you, it was probably the best veteran ceremony I've ever attended in the four cities I've been, and so I really commend you on that and really appreciating our veterans out there. I look forward to doing some good work, and again, once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We're happy you're here. Will you say your name one more time?
Greg Sujiuchi.
Sujiuchi.
Yeah, just like it's spelled.
Just like it's spelled. Absolutely. Thank you. Welcome. It was good to see you on Monday, and thank you for your service. All right, our next special presentation is a proclamation. Military Order of the Purple Heart. In honor of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, whereas the City of Grand Terrace and the State of California has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American Service Award or decoration made available to all who serve and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Service who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget, and whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 2929, has selected the City of Grand Terrace as a Purple Heart City for its ongoing appreciation and support for all veterans, and whereas the City of Grand Terrace appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they have earned. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Magna Bo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim the City of Grand Terrace as a Purple Heart City, and to encourage the citizens of Grand Terrace to show their appreciation for the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support they have earned. And it is signed by all of the council members. It's presented this 12th day of November, 2019. And we have Len Tavernetti here, who will say a few words, and then he will join the council for a photo op.
Mayor, members of the council, and the citizens of Grand Terrace, first of all, thank you for signing the proclamation and having me here today. Our chapter covers both San Bernardino and Riverside County, where spread out all over 53 different communities. So, but our attendance is very small because most of our members are, in addition to being scattered, we have World War II and Korean War veterans, all the way down to the Gulf Wars that are ongoing now. The majority are Vietnam veterans, as you would expect. We grew up at a time when a young president said, "That's not what your country can do for you. Ask what you can do for your country." And we all think we did something for our country. We're proud of it. We carry battle wounds, emotional scars. This last weekend, we marched and rode in a parade in Riverside and one in Redlands. And when we see little children waving flags, giving us a salute, old timers struggling to their feet and throwing us a little eyeball like that, we feel no pain. The wounds are gone. The emotional stress that we have, it's not there. What you're doing here today is just one more part of our healing process, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts to know that we are appreciated by our fellow countrymen. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. If you would, please honor us with a picture while we present this to you. Team and their successful completion of FEMA basic training course. We have Heidi Aguirre, who's our Assistant Planner.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and City Council. The City Council reinstated the CERT program last, on October 9th, 2018, and the program became effective in January 1st of this year. CERT is a FEMA training program that is specifically structured to train volunteers on how to respond safely, responsibly, and effectively in the event of a disaster. The CERT basic training is a 20-hour class, and it teaches volunteers life-saving skills such as response, light search and rescue, fire safety, and team organization. San Bernardino County Fire, the Office of Emergency Services, represented by John Ferdon, who's here in the audience, and Michael Ramirez, have been assisting the City of Grand Terrace in restating the CERT program. Last month, the City hosted the second basic CERT training program, and the volunteers that completed the training are Aldo Aguilar, Elfeaga Bert Holt, Kaitrin Cortez, Carol Finn, Gloria Culas, Lisa Knabnat, Anna Owens, Marquis Quinton, Robin Smidt, Jasmine Tokske, and Ronald Trujillo Jr. We would like to thank the residents who completed the training, also the volunteers who helped teach the classes, and thanks San Bernardino County Office of Emergency Services for their ongoing assistance with the City of Grand Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, I see we have one CERT member here. We have two CERT members here.
Maybe three.
Who else is here who completed the course?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come down for a picture?
Yes, please.
Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So then we will move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove an item? All right, see none? I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve and accept the consent calendar.
I'll sync at the motion. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protam Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. A request for brief response from staff may be made to questions raised during public comment, or a matter may be requested to be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Thank you. Our first speaker is Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, I'm going to piggyback on the things I have been saying at the last public comment, several comments. After the last council meeting, on the front page of the Sun, October 25th, LA County City's finances at risk. So recently, the California State Auditor's Office did a study on the fiscal health of 471 cities in the State of California, and of those, 40% of them were deemed high-risk, some of the worst ones right around Los Angeles. So I had brought this up before and had some questions, but I'm glad to see that it's potentially coming up on the future agenda. I hope you all agree with this on line item number I and approve it so that we can discuss this, because I still feel very uncomfortable that the city has only two months' reserves in their budget. The second thing I want to reiterate again, I mentioned last time, I don't know if anyone followed up on this, but I have been following it because it affects the entire area west of the freeway, between Locadina and the freeway. Company is, that I mentioned, has purchased the Old State of Brothers Warehouse campus, and they plan on tearing everything down from Walnut Avenue all the way to Deberry and in between the two railroads, the U.P. and the Burlington. And they were going to build a giant trucking facility. I don't know any of those details. As a matter of fact, neither does the City of Colton. They are currently looking for someone to do the EIR at this time. That's the latest update I have. But what's concerns, should concern us all the most is verbally, they have intended to cut off Terrace Avenue between Barton Road and Deberry. Now, for those of you who aren't super familiar with that, that is right across the main entrance to the Old State of Brothers Warehouse, which is lineage, who has since moved out. The reason why this is so important, because whenever there's an emergency or there's a detour, because Barton Road is closed, specifically the old rickety bridge that will be rebuilt one day, that is the detour for all the vehicles traveling on Barton Road, including all the 18-wheelers. So if they so do cut off Terrace Avenue over there, the entire traffic will be rerouted through my neighborhood, the old neighborhood where roads are old, 100 years old and narrow, as well as the narrow road up above my farm that where a vehicle recently, another vehicle recently went over the edge. So I would like and appreciate, especially with our new planning director, if he would, or somebody would follow through and follow up on this, because it does affect us. I don't know how many trucks, they don't know how many trucks, but it will affect us not just on our freeway, but with smog. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. I would like follow up on what Mr. McConnell's discussing as well, because I live in the neighborhood, and trucks coming through there will be a problem for more people than just the neighborhood. That's not what I was going to speak about, but I have something a little bit with that. I'd like to thank the Veterans Committee, that Foundation of Grand Terrace, whoever put on the event on Monday was fabulous. I cried, I laughed, I watched people, everyone had a good time. Mr. Hussey, you were wonderful. It was just such an emotional day. The music was wonderful. I think it brought so many people together and made everyone feel really good inside. And I won't cry right now, but I'm trying to. And it was just really great, and I thank you all for working so hard. I know it just wasn't that committee. It was the city, and it was the council, and it was the fire department. It was everybody that was there, that had to be there because there was an event going on. But the people in attendance were so happy to see it and be part of it, and I just thank you all for that.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. And that is our last request to speak, so we'll move to council communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
So, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a personal welcome to the new Planning and Development Director, Mr. Sujiuchi, and I'm glad that you're here. And also, you know, we're both vets, so thanks for your service, you know. The Military Order of the Purple Heart, that I wanted to, I'm very thankful that we are a city that recognize, is in partnership, working together with them. They were the first ones to handle my claim when I retired from the Army, and they were very effective, and I thank them for that personally, and I'm glad that we're involved with them. They're a great organization. I want to thank the new CERT members also for their dedication and their willingness and their time, wanting to be a part of the community, improve the community. For anybody out there who is interested in the monetary value of voluntary hours, I think the state lists it right now at about $30 an hour, or $29.95, something like that an hour. And so, thank you, volunteers, for all that you do for our city, because we just couldn't do it without you. And we would like to have some more. I'm pleased and proud of the CERT leadership and the city staff that is growing that program, those who are willing to spend that 20 hours learning. I specifically want to reach out, he's not here tonight, he and his wife, but there are, we've had a CERT team since 2006 in our city, and we have one charter member, family actually, who started in 2006 with it, and Joe and Helen Ramos really poured themselves into that program to work real hard to get it to grow. And I just, if you're watching out there, Joe and Helen, I just want to say thank you for all you do. You helped with this last training program, and so I look forward to many more hours of community service with you. On October 31, I attended the trunk or treat in Rollins Park, and that was a great event. I'm so thankful that we are doing that for our residents. It grows larger every year. We had several hundred families came out, participated. Congratulations to all those winners who won with the costume contests and on all the various contests they had. But I think everybody was a winner that came out that night, because it was just a fun time to be had for all, and I look forward to all of us doing it again, sharing that time with those ghosts and goblins we have in town. November 1, the next day, was our Country Fair, and that was a great event also. I'd like to thank the Heritage and Cultural, Historical and Cultural Society or Committee for hosting that and putting on another successful one this year. That team of people continues to benefit the rest of our city with those showing their great crafts and all the great books for sale, so that was a great event. And then, on November 11, of course, Veterans Day at the park, many of us have mentioned that, it was a great event. The Foundation of Grand Terrace continues to support events like this, and I thank them for that, and thank all the residents that came out. I thank the veterans, which is what the day was for, and thank you all for your service and making that possible. I'm so thankful that we have that beautiful monument and to display our honor to those who serve. Speaking of veterans and future events, since we won't be here, and I won't be able to announce this for our next one, I am, for our veterans, I'm pleased to announce a Veterans Resource Fair hosted by Congressman Pete Aguilar, and it's Friday, November 22, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the VA Loma Linda Ambulatory Care Center on Redlands Boulevard in Loma Linda. And I encourage you all, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I encourage all of you to go out there. You know, my dad went all through his life, he was a vet from World War II, and he wouldn't have anything to do with the VA until I encouraged him, and I actually filed his claim for him. And in the last decade of his life, he could say nothing, but he just praised the VA and was so thankful for the care and the concern that they gave him, and so I encourage all of you, push aside what you used to hear about it, go out there, and learn what is available for you. The next thing, we won't be here, so I can't announce this next meeting, at the same location, the VA Loma Linda Healthcare System, the Ambulatory Care Center on Redlands Boulevard, on December 7 at 8:00 a.m. is the Clay Hunt, the annual Clay Hunt Suicide Prevention Walk in support of veterans and their family members struggling with mental health issues. And I strongly encourage you, and I'll be out there walking in support of this, and I'd encourage all of you to please look into it, it'd be a great experience. If nothing else, you can use the walk. And thank you for that opportunity, Madam Mayor, and that is all.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with Mr. Allen there, being a vet to VA, I use the VA establishment there and their services, and they are a great resource and great group of people that, it's come a long way, and they want to help people. So if you're a vet, and I also, go out there and get your benefits that you earn. It's for you and your family. I went to Terrace View Unity Day, the red ribbon, to say no to drugs, and it was really nice. I was there with Lieutenant Wolf and other first responders, and the kids were great, and they made their heart out there, and the helicopter came by and took a picture, but it was a good group of kids, and, you know, they're really excited, and hopefully we can stop this generation one day is not using substance abuse and abusing it and stop using drugs. But they were all smiles and eager to go, and the teachers and the staff and faculty, really great people there. And the trunk or treat, you know, is a great event, you know, thank the city staff for coming all out there and doing your all and staying out there till nine o'clock and cleaning everything up and stuff. It's really a great event for the City of Grand Terrace, plus our local communities coming out there, because they look, you know, for somewhere safe and have a good time with their family, and they really enjoy themselves. I forgot how much candy we handed out, but it was a lot of candy. And Mr. Duffy's not allowed to have any candy next year, because he's bouncing off the walls everywhere. He's, you know, had to keep the mic away from him, but it was a really great event, and it was a good family wholesome event. And, yes, Veterans Day, the Veterans Freedom Walk Committee, and the Foundation of Grand Terrace, it's getting better and better every year. It is a beautiful event. The girls that were singing, oh my God, their voices were beautiful. I'm glad they didn't have me up there singing, because I would have messed it up. There was, the high school band came out, it was, you know, it was just a great event all the way through. Beautiful day. Thank you, volunteers who put it up. Thank you, committee members. Thank you, staff, for working on it. It was, you know, thank our veterans and their spouses. It was just a beautiful day, and it's a day to remember and recognize our vets and our spouses, because like I said in my speech, if it wasn't for a spouse or dependents, you know, the veterans, you know, they love their country and God, and, but, you know, we, they do everything for their spouses too, and their dependents, their loved ones. And it was just a beautiful day. And one last thing, my last, my second son got married, so I'm an empty nester, so I have a big bi-bedroom house, and now at least my granddaughter runs around, but, you know, so I'm proud of him. We're blessed to have another granddaughter, and so that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
I want to lead with saying that it was a pleasure that someone that serves on the council was able to be the keynote speaker. You did very well, and you were very gracious in recognizing the veterans, like Mr. Allen, and the spouses, like Mr. Magna Bo and my husband. I appreciate that very much. And it was fabulous, and thanks to the city staff, that staff, the Halloween Haunt, the veterans, and also... the, um, veterans, and also, um, the country fair. I went to the Halloween Haunt, um, at my age and back issues, trying to play with little kids where they throw the ball, and couldn't reach over to pick up the balls with them, so I just scooted them. And I, I thought I did like a half hour, probably was twenty minutes, and I handed it over to our young staff to, to do. Last week, I attended the city manager, um, I don't know why it has this long acronym, but it's Commercial Brokers. And it was interesting, because the tour, there was about five buses, and you spent a good majority of the day, and it was focused on all the logistics warehouses coming in. But we did pass through Grand Terrace, and they were so gracious to allow me to speak for a moment, and when we passed Grand Terrace, they, they, you know, showed, um, our, our properties. I did a little more research on their site, and I encourage any of you, because we all get the same invitation, um, to go, so we can put our city on the map and, and do a little networking. But looking at it, they also are very creative. They're also looking at, um, obsolete uses and, and have some case studies on how they reverse these obsolete uses. Very small space, um, office buildings. So I think it's something that we really need to, um, follow up with on, 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 on this group. And lastly, um, I was in Boston the last meeting. My great uncle had passed away in two thousand seventeen, and this was the first opportunity that some of us from across the country could gather and go to his gravesite. There's a national cemetery in Cape Cod. It was wild turkeys. It was just really, really beautiful. But my uncle was a career Air Force. Um, he was a Staff Sergeant. He was a World War Veteran, a Korean Veteran, and he was, um, a POW. So the Germans marched him from camp to camp during World War II until he was liberated, and I was really proud of him, and it's really appropriate to mention, um, this is, um, veteran's post date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rubliss. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed, well, let me first say that the staff is incredible. Our staff is amazing. I don't know anybody else that would sacrifice the amount of time they do in personal lives and so on to be able to do the thing and supply the, the various activities and so on that we have. And then, just in their jobs, period, uh, really amazing. So we're very fortunate. I did go to the trunk-or-treat thing, uh, and did get a chance to hand out some candy. I did save a few for my, myself. I can't imagine if you could tell that, but, but I did notice one thing, and that I'd been working for about a half an hour handing out candy, and then, and then the mayor came up behind me, and she had a witch's hat on, and I'd taken a picture of the invisible man, and all of a sudden, the picture disappeared. Now, I'm not going to say anything that the mayor did anything necessarily, but I, I know that the picture disappeared. I had a, a picture, so, okay, anyway. And then, uh, I enjoyed the, uh, the country fair. This is the first time I haven't had to lug my amplifier over there, and the music machine was really great. I thought it was neat when the band was there, and we had quite a few participants, and I found an old picture book that somebody had put up there in the library that showed me some things back when I was a child over in Ontario, and, and those things reminded me of the flood in Cucamonga in seventy-one, and, and a whole bunch of things that happened in the inland empire, so that was, uh, nice. And then also, got myself a, uh, a George Jones disc for a dollar, which was quite a find, and since then, of course, it's spurred me on to get on Smule, on the Smule app, and, and try to sing some George Jones songs, so that's, that was really fun. And last but not least, of course, my friend here, Councilman Hussey. I'd offered to help out a little bit on providing some information, because this is a big day for us, for my family. My grandfather, who was born in nineteen hundred, uh, who came, came from Kentucky and, and came to California, and then enlisted in the Navy, and in nineteen nineteen, he barely missed the World War One. Fortunately, he got to tour around on the USS Wyoming for two years, and up and down the coast, and just patrolling back and forth, pretty much. Then he went to Hawaii, and he went to a few other places. Bottom line is, is that he got to be, uh, ended up on, in service on the USS California, which was one of the two ships that was built on the West Coast, uh, that what they called the Dreadnought Series. And they were the ships that everybody really put a lot of, poured a lot of energy into. They had as big a fourteen-inch guns. It was a, it was a real monster of a ship at, at the time, one of the first ones that survived through to the, uh, to World War Two. His tile went on the Freedom Wall, thanks to Jim Magna Bo and, and a few others. And, uh, his name is Andrew Claude Wilson, and he was a construction, uh, construction mechanic or construction, uh, person, uh, second class when he left the service, and he was there for three years. And I'm sure that experience, uh, probably moved him through the rest of his life. So it was a real big thing for us, and, and I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Hussey's words. I really appreciate all the activities that we had. It was a spectacular get-together, and I know that the spirit was there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, I'm going to start with business, and then I will get on to the fun that we've had in this city. On November six, Omni Trans, um, had their director has resigned, and so the Assistant Director, Erin Rogers, has been appointed as the interim director. And so she has a big job ahead of her, since they are charged with finding eleven percent cuts in their budget. So through that process, they brought back to the board and adopt, and asked us to adopt the Service Adjustment Realignment Guiding Principles, and the overall scale of the proposed service reduction and realignment. So they're looking at seventy-one thousand service hours per year that they will be cutting out of service, and they've gone to every member jurisdiction and talked to them about the proposed changes. And so they asked us to, to adopt their, their principles going forward, and they really, they came up with, um, seven that they had already shared with us, but then they came up with an eighth, and the first one was minimize customer impact. And they really are doing what they can to make sure that there is service, and where they are cutting service, that there are alternatives for those who are using the service. They're looking at a business approach, which is to maximize the efficiency and productivity of their service. They are maintaining core weekday productivity network services. They are reducing coverage in areas that have duplication of service. They're finding ways to combine routes. They are providing only the mandated ADA service. And again, if they are leaving somebody out of a service area who has, is currently receiving service, but that service will be cut, they are going to be working with them directly for alternatives. They do have the contacts for those that, that use the ADA service. They want to maintain service quality, and they want to minimize the impact on their employees. In other words, when they do cuts, they are going to be not filling particular vacancies more so than they are going to be doing layoffs. But then they also added for our consideration that they want to provide service to all of the service, to the Joint Powers Association members. So every single agency that is a member of Omni Trans, they want to make sure that they are providing service in their area, and they will do it using the guiding principles as, as described. The board did adopt their, their guiding principles and the preliminary reductions, and they are set to go out to the public now and do public meetings. At San Bernardino County Transportation Authority the same day, there were a few major items that came forward, and one of them was that we received a presentation on the San Bernardino County, uh, countywide zero emission vehicle readiness and implementation plan. So this went through and looked at all of the, all of the network that is currently set in our county to charge electric vehicles. And there's a great need that is going unmet, and so they've, they've charged themselves with, so to speak, with finding out where the needs are and what it's going to take to get there, and creating partnerships to, to find ways to install a, a more robust network for the current need, and then they are actually projecting the needs in the future and how they will get to that growth. And I believe that that presentation is available on the SBCTA website. We awarded a construction contract to Guy F. Atkinson Construction for the State Route Two Ten Lane Edition. That's the, um, where the Two Ten is coming from San Bernardino through Highland. It, it comes down into, uh, from three lanes in either direction to two lanes in either direction. So they're coming back through, and they're, they're adding that third lane, and, um, that will be out into the baseline area, the baseline interchange. They, we awarded a sole source contract to Stoddler U.S. Inc. for the procurement of a zero emission multiple unit rail vehicle with full notice to proceed contingent upon allocation of transit in inner-city rail capital program funds. This is going to be a hybrid hydrogen fuel cell vehicle, and it will, it will run on the same track as the Redlands Passenger Rail with the hopes that when this pilot program is over, they will then take each of the, um, low emission of vehicles and create these, um, zero emission multiple unit rail vehicles. So they're looking at, if the pilot program works, they will take the rail cars that they are purchasing at this time, and they will fit them with the zero emission power pack. And this will be the first of its kind in the country. So our region is really on the map with this. We also provide a direction to staff to begin development of the Metro Link, Gold Link Hybrid Rail as a cost-effective approach to providing more frequent service to the San Bernardino Line. And this is in collaboration with Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority and the Southern California Regional Rail Authority and other affected local jurisdictions. And they're to report back to us on December twelfth at that meeting. This has had quite a bit of discussion, because there are a number of cities that believe that we are proposing this instead of supporting the Gold Line, which actually will be changing its name soon. But there's the plan for the Gold Line to come to the county line, and with that, SBCTA had in their budget to help to take it from the county line into Montclair. But they're having troubles getting it to Pomona at this time. So this, this program that we're looking at, and we've directed staff to look at, would actually allow us to send Metro Link connection out to Pomona about the same time that the Gold Line gets out to Pomona. So it will give us service out to that area far in advance of the date that they are able to get their Gold Line to the county line, which they don't have a date certain on that. And then, lastly, an invitation having to do with this. The Southern California area governments have drafted a Connect SoCal Elected Official Briefing, and they will be giving this at the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Board of Directors Metro Valley Study Session Meeting. What this is, is it's a, it's a, um, twenty-twenty through twenty-forty-five Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. It will be available for public review and comment through January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, but the draft plan will be presented to, at a board meeting on Thursday, the fourteenth, at nine-thirty, for anyone that's interested in going, or you can actually watch a video of it. I believe that they stream that meeting. So if you're interested in hearing the presentation, or if you can't get to that presentation, you are able to review the plan through January twenty-twenty, and, um, you can email connectsocal@scag.ca.gov if you want more information about how you can do that. So thank you, Councilmember Hussey, for reminding me about Unity Day. I, I, I attended Unity Day, and one of the things that I find most beneficial about that is the parents that come, the business partners that come out, the teachers that spend the time putting together such a day to greet the children and to really have them focus on finding a way to get along with each other and to promote unity and collaboration with the students, and that's just a great, it's a great lesson. And there were so many students that would show up with big smiles on their faces, and their parents dropping them off. We're just amazed, and we had the fire department there, we had the sheriff there. Everybody came out during that week to talk to the kids about getting along and about staying off drugs. And it's a really good message, and they get to see a lot of adults wanting to partner to share that message. I also want to thank our, all of our volunteers across the city. So we'll start with the, um, the Halloween Haunt. I know our staff did a huge job putting that together. So thank you to the staff, and thank you for the community volunteer groups that came out to give candy to the, to the kids and created the games for them to play. Thank you for our SERC team members who give up their time and are being ready for our community in emergency. And thank you to our community and historical, historical and cultural committee for all the work that they put in for their country fair every year. And lastly, I want to thank the veterans. Veterans Day was a, was a beautiful ceremony. We had a wonderful keynote speaker. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hussey. Thank you so much to the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee for all that they put into it. But they also brought in the Girl Scouts, they brought in the, the high school band, they had a local dance group that came, and it was really the coming together of community that made it wonderful and that we were taking time out to remember our veterans. And so thank you to all the veterans who have served and protected our freedom. And I'll stop there and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is public hearings. We have one item of, on our public hearing agenda for tonight, and so to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We will follow this procedure as we go through. We will hear the presentation of the agenda item. We will hear any written communication that has been received. The city council will ask, have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. The public hearing will be opened. The applicant's comments will be heard. We'll have oral testimony from the public. They will be limited to three minutes. We'll have an applicant's rebuttal if that is necessary, and then we will close the public hearing, and the city council will have deliberation. So our one item tonight is the ordinance of the City of Grand Terrace amending Title Fifteen Buildings and Construction of this Grand Terrace Municipal Code to adopt twenty-nineteen California Code of Regulations Title Twenty-four State Building Codes. And so, do we have a staff report for this?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for the record. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. And as you indicated, this is just, this is the second reading, uh, and so if, if there aren't any additional questions or anyone wanting to speak, I don't really have a staff report to provide.
All right. Okay. Does, um, council have any questions of staff at this time? And any public testimony at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we're not having a public hearing, right? It's the second reading?
Uh, we are having a public hearing, but there is nobody here to speak on it.
Okay.
So just open and close it, and, uh...
All right. Public hearing open. Public hearing closed.
Perfect.
And I'll bring it back to council for their deliberation. Or consideration of a motion?
So would the motion be to direct the city turn to read the title of, wait for the reading of, and adopt?
Yes, it would be.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Amending Section Fifteen Point Zero Eight Point Zero One Zero of Chapter Fifteen Point Zero Eight Building Code, Amending Chapter Fifteen Point Zero Nine Existing Building Code, Amending Section Fifteen Point Ten Oh One Oh of Chapter Fifteen Point Ten Residential Code, Amending Section Fifteen Point Twelve Point Oh One Oh of Chapter Fifteen Point Twelve Electrical Code, Amending Section Fifteen Point Sixteen Point Oh One Oh of Chapter Fifteen Point Sixteen Plumbing Code, Amending Section Fifteen Point Seventeen Point Oh One Oh of Chapter Fifteen, of Chapter Fifteen Point Seventeen Green Building Standards, Adding Chapter Fifteen Point Nineteen Historical Building Code, Amending Section Fifteen Point Twenty Point Oh One Oh of Chapter Fifteen Point Twenty Mechanical Code..." 15.20 Mechanical Code, and Adding Chapter 15.21 Reference Standards Code of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Thereby Adopting By Reference the 2019 California Building Code Series, Including the 2019 California Building Code, 2019 California Existing Building Code, 2019 California Residential Code, 2019 California Electrical Code, 2019 California Plumbing Code, 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, 2019 California Historical Building Code, 2019 California Mechanical Code, and 2019 California Reference Standards Code." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to our unfinished business, which is the update City of Grand Terrace Legislative Platform for Assemblymember Reyes and State Senator Leva to advance in California State Assembly and Senate. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, for the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Uh, and, um, it's a little laggy. Thank you. So my goal tonight is to provide our legislative advocates in the state senate and assembly an opportunity to look at the city council's priorities, thereby allowing the state elected officials representing the citizens of Grand Terrace to align their legislative priorities with our local elected officials. As the council's aware, I was here in September to talk to the council about our legislative priorities. Uh, and there were 10, or 10 items, but actually only nine made it to the final cut that we have the staff recommending today. One was the hazard mitigation program that is really dealing with our slope and that's potential liability there, the potential hazard. Traffic enforcement, that would be our, um, uh, our, our program where we are looking at, uh, I'm sorry, ticketing, uh, digital, digital ticketing. Uh, school construction, actually, and this is dealing with the relocation of the elementary school to a, a prime location, trying to utilize existing bond funding to try to promote that. Uh, recreation in terms of support for Prop 68, for our $6 million grant that we submitted under that program. Internet connectivity, that would be developing a internet mesh network in our local parks. Uh, transit line shelter, that's giving a smart bus shelter on Barton Road. Accessibility, as your council's aware, the city did receive $20,000 this past state budget allocation for, um, accessible playground equipment. And so we'd like to ask, uh, to try and get some additional funding to be able to expand that to other parks also. In addition to urban farming and also looking at our certain areas of the city that qualify for urban farming and promoting that through various state programs. And the public safety, that's the neighborhood watch program along with, um, ALPR camera So with that, Mayor and council, I'm available for any questions.
Questions of staff at this time? I have a question, Mr. Duffy. The urban greening grant, is that in combination with the urban farming?
No, it's actually two different programs, Mayor. We actually submitted for an urban greening grant, uh, twice and we were not successful. Uh, so hopefully the third time's a charm. What we're trying to do is gain access to the, like rails to trails, to gain access to the San Antonio River Trail. Uh, and there's also, there's multiple programs that you can look at to try and achieve. That's part of the, the state's overall, I think, $4 billion in, in programs for outdoor activity. So we're looking at various options.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Councilmember Allen.
Um, I just wanted to ask you, the city manager, if we're having any progress on remediating this slope, the mitigating for this, the Mount Vernon slope? I mean, I, I live near there and I just, every day is, there's dirt on the road.
Sure. Um, so one of the things that, because the city passes hazard mitigation plan, whenever there is a, a national emergency, we qualify to try to receive some of those funds. We did receive notice from OES that we were not successful in this last, um, application that we applied for. I have been trying for the last, I would say 60 days to get a meeting with OES to try to find out. Um, so we weren't successful in that application, but there are other applications we can apply for. Uh, I, I really believe that this is really something that we're going to need to, um, look at this approach from a, a slightly different angle. Partnership with, with Colton because they also have some of the slope and also working very closely with, uh, either our state senator and, or legislator to let them know that here we have an opportunity, that we've done the work in terms of, um, identifying this as a potential hazard. And so being able to sit down with those, uh, legislators, to be able to, to talk to them about that would be very helpful for us.
Well, that would be great. Thank you, uh, for that.
All right. So, Mr. Duffy, you're looking for confirmation that we want to continue with these?
Approval of this current platform and what we'll do is we'll send a letter to both Assemblyperson, Assemblymember Reyes, and also Senator Leva.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the City of Grand Terrace Legislative Platform for 2020 to forward platform to Assemblymember Reyes and State Senator Connie Leva's office.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to our new business. The first one is the Award of Community Benefit Fund in the amount of $2,000 to Family Services Association for free art classes and projects for senior residents. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. Staff before you is an application for the city's Community Benefits Fund. This staff report supports the following goals: ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received, and develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with the community and, uh, in the implementation of youth programs. We received one application this month. Uh, this was received from the Family Service Association. The Family Service Association currently provides a coordinator at our senior center and they run the nutrition program. Their proposal before you tonight is to actually provide free art classes for the seniors at the senior center. And they were looking at three different kinds of art. They're going to do air, air-dry clay art. This is like Play-Doh. When you open it, you can mold it into something, but once it dries, which is about 24 hours, it now becomes hard. No baking, nothing required. So they will try to, um, help seniors make clay sculptures or decorate, decorate a plaque or decorate a, uh, a picture frame. That, that's what they're planning to do with their air dry, air-dry clay art. They're also thinking about mosaic art. Now mosaic art is some, something like a puzzle. They're going to give you pieces of an art, you're going to put it together, glue it together, and that's your piece of art that they can, you know, display either in the center itself or in their homes. And meditation art. They just believe that art therapy has a healing effect for a variety of ailments. And with our seniors, they believe that depression, trauma, illness is part of that. So they're thinking that painting and drawing will bring them out, you know, give them a place to interact with each other and make them feel like they belong. So their purpose there is healing and life enhancing, to help seniors connect, participate, to increase the awareness of themselves and to try to reduce their depression and anxiety. Okay, what their, the request is for $2,000. Um, the instructor fees will be $800 and the materials will be $1,200. So currently, our budget balance as of July 2019 is $13,000. Approval of this will bring our Community Benefit Fund, uh, award balance to $11,000. Okay, that is the end. Um, the Family Service Association could not be here tonight. They were unable to make it, but when, um, I've talked to them, what they will do is hold the art classes and once they've completed these, we will bring the seniors back so they can present to the council the projects that they have completed after this period of time. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Fortune, what questions does council have of staff? Councilmember Allen.
I don't really have a question, Ms. Fortune. I want to thank you for your report, but I just have a, wanted to ask if you could mention to FSA or those who are organizing this that we have art shows that our youth put on. I think it'd be great if we had a senior center art show.
That would be excellent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Any requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Closed request to speak from public and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval for the Community Benefit Fund Grant Application from Family Services Association and award the grand amount of $2,000 to provide free art classes slash projects for seniors.
Second.
All right. I got a, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Item number 12 is City Hall Closure During the 2019 Holidays. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is just an update to the council regarding, um, the holiday schedule for, um, City Hall. Um, and on April 14th, 2015, the city council approved a resolution that, uh, delegates authority of the city manager to set the holiday closure schedule over the Christmas and New Year's holidays. Uh, and this particular year, we are scheduled to close on December the 23rd and returning on January 1st, um, 2020. But, um, obviously, city services will still be ongoing. And so, and if there is an, an after-hours issue, we encourage residents to call. And after-hours would be anytime during the time that we're off. The call, the 909-824-0680, that's the sheriff's non-emergency number, and they have all of the, um, appropriate numbers to contact and call out staff for those particular services. In addition to that, if you get to report an issue via the internet, you can also get the same numbers, but also there'll be, uh, ability to leave the information and that will also go to staff. Uh, City Hall will reopen on January the 2nd, 2020.
All right. Questions of staff? Councilmember Robles.
Yeah, I just want to say the hard work that staff does, um, and holidays, they're not really getting because they're working for, for us. So I, I hope this is a well-deserved break for them that the, the community supports. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move adoption of the item.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Move to item 13, which is Acceptance of Work and Notice of Completion for Work Completed by MCC Pipeline, Inc. for the Van Buren Culvert Replacement Project. Termination of Emergency Declaration Related There To. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. This item, uh, before you is the acceptance of the work and notice of completion and the termination of emergency for the Van Buren Culvert Replacement Project. This, uh, item supports staff goal number two to maintain public safety and to ensure our residents continue, uh, outstanding quality of life. On September, uh, earlier this year, the city declared an emergency and entered into a contract with MCC Pipeline for a culvert replacement at the intersection of Mount Vernon and Van Buren Boulevard. The work was completed, uh, by October 15th and was within budget. We had one change order that was, uh, worked on and mitigated some surface, subsurface conditions as well as the backfill for the pipe. The total cost of the project came out to $24,832. At this point, uh, the work needs to be accepted by the city. A notice of completion needs to be filed with the county and the, um, emergency declaration needs to be terminated. Should the council have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Mayor Protem Wilson?
Just one question. Uh, who did the, uh, plan for the emergency work anyway?
We utilized, uh, an existing plan that showed the culvert with the profile.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it was the development on the north, I'm sorry, the southeast corner had showed the pipe in plan view and a profile of it. And the contractor was able to, um, bid on that and give us the quote based on that.
Did you notice if any of the other contractors included a slurry backfill or, just out of curiosity?
They, they didn't.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that recommendation came from a geotech that I had to consult with.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any requests to speak on this item? Adam, City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to item 14, which is the Extension of Agreement for San Bernardino Valley Coordinated Traffic Signal System for additional two years until November 29, 2021. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Uh, this next item is just a contract amendment to extend, uh, to extend the term of the contract for the, um, valley-wide program which coordinates traffic signals through the area. This amendment adds two years to the term of the contract and, uh, allows us to, uh, qualify for some, um, reimbursements should our signals pass the program. Uh, staff is recommending approving the amendment at this time for the signal synchronization and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you for your report. Uh, any questions of staff at this time? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move the adoption of the item.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 15, which is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Submit an SB2 Grant Application in the Amount of $160,000. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in 2017, the legislature passed SB2 to incentivize the creation of housing to address the statewide housing crisis. The first round of grants for SB2 fund is the planning grant application due to HD by November 30th, 2019. Each city, uh, county may request funding based on population. Therefore, the City of Grand Terrace can receive about $160,000. Eligible activities may include an update to the general plan, community plan, specific plan, updates to zoning ordinance, environmental analysis that eliminate the need for a project-specific review, and local process improvements that improve and expedite local planning. The city may want to consider planning options like specific plans, transit-oriented developments or development of a parking, of a parking district. Give you some examples here. So most recently, this property on Main and, um, um, Main and Taylor exchanged hands for about $7 million. Uh, once it exchanged, it's about 13 acres, uh, there next to rail. And this portion here is actually in Colton, but the majority of the property here is here and this is Main Street down here. The, the developer who bought the property came in to see the city and he said he was very interested in doing a transit-oriented development. And what that would mean is that you'd have rail access and also a housing in this general area. And so, um, this would be a great opportunity for us to utilize funding like this to help develop a... to help develop a specific plan for transit-oriented development. Any additional funding associated above that amount would be borne by the developer. So, but at this point in time, and in addition to that, we've also come to the council and talked to the council about developing a parking district. And that's to help out on our major corridors here when we have properties that are very small and are parked, are underparked. Creating a parking district would allow people, businesses in this district to meet their overall parking requirements by sharing parking in the other areas. But there'd have to be a formalized process to look at that. Those are just two options which we could utilize the grant for. At this point in time, what we're asking the council to do is to actually approve the resolution that would allow the City Manager to apply for the grant. So the primary purpose of this report is to send the council to approve the resolution, which allows the City Manager to submit the grant application. But this is also an opportunity for the council to provide direction. If additional funding is required, as I said before, from private developers, they will also be required to kick in that part once we come up with an actual selection. So, as I said, the action tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an SB2 grant application in the amount of $160,000.
Okay, questions of staff? Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles.
So if we, is this going to require the parking, the district, the parking district? Is this something that we're just going to be exploring options? Or can we actually, are the property owners all around, all on board with this? Have we explored this with them?
We have had some conversations with them, but it requires us to, you know, to really develop and define the district. And what would happen is you look at that, and we would utilize an opportunity to be able to identify all the parcels and identify, for example, if a certain type of restaurant or facility wanted to go in, based on our parking requirements, are they going to be able to meet those needs? If not, we would then develop a parking district that all, that everyone could share if they decided to join in the parking district. That's just one option for them to consider. And we've actually, I've talked about this before, so it doesn't have to be related to this particular grant, but it's just one of the options you could use this grant for.
Well, I think it's a pretty ingenious idea. I mean, we have this whole issue right that main corner right there, you know, and it's all hinges on a lack of parking, any progress with it. So I look forward to proceeding with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
You also indicated this is our opportunity for some direction. It's been, I just looked at Zillow and I was, I'd seen that property and I was kind of curious about it. But one of the things that I saw in this application is you could go up to $1 million if you worked with other agencies. And it just seemed, if we could do something Riverside and Colton, and I know Councilman Allen has always talked about the Old Gate Park area. And maybe there's some dynamics going on with our Gateway Project. Maybe that needs a review, an update with us. Also, are we going to be looking at obsolete codes? Is this essentially a general plan update?
You can use the funding for that, but I think, you know, I just had this conversation the other day with one of our consultants. You know, we have in our code a height limitation in terms of 35 feet. Well, some of the newer buildings now require a minimum of 40 feet inside. So that means immediately, anyone coming into the city would have to go through this whole variance component. And so, yeah, there are, there are a number of items we need to look at to see, what is the industry requiring, looking for, and what are our codes? Because if we're, if we're trying to bring businesses in and immediately we're trying to modify the codes, then we should do that ahead of time instead of an individual application.
Right, because it just seems like we've done some upzoning, downzoning, and then requiring CUPs from folks. So if we could kind of like do a cleanup action through this, that would, I think, be great. Also, I know the industry always wants to have a swave parking requirements. And I don't, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I do believe that we have some density, condos, apartments, City Hall, for example, DeBery with residential high intents. And maybe we need a parking district there where people that reside there get a decal. And maybe those that don't maybe have to pay a fee, you know, maybe just an annual fee or something to kind of offlet. And finally, I don't know what our fees are, and I don't know how much our budget depends on fees. But I know when we, when I worked with the county board supervisors 30-some years ago, we kind of did like an infrastructure fee holiday to get some movement going. And I would like to kind of see, because one councilperson that's not here anymore said, you know, we really ought to look at what fees we have that are burdensome. I mean, we're charging for everything, and maybe it's not necessary to charge for everything, and it's possibly burdensome to a lot of people. And maybe that requires a look-see.
You know, and one of the things that we can do to promote development is, so for example, the council has mentioned in the past about a Barton Road. And so, right now, every business that has to go in the Barton Road has to do a traffic study. So, every time a business goes on Barton Road in the same area, they do the traffic study. We could expedite that process by simply doing a Barton Road traffic study that would take into account, you know, the category and the size of the lots and what could possibly go in. And therefore, we wouldn't, developers wouldn't have to, one, spend money for traffic study, and two, take the time in order to do that. We would be almost like ready to go. And so, you're absolutely right. One of the things that we're going to be doing too is we're going to be coming back to the council in, I believe, January with information on our, on our fee schedule and updating the fee schedule. And I guess we have it right now. Our fee schedule is by, is it by ordinance? And so, we would like to move that to a resolution that I believe that you would then adopt every year, provide you with more flexibility. And so, those are other ways that we can be helpful. But certainly, all of these ideas are right on point. And whether we utilize this $160,000 for, one of them doesn't preclude that we not take up all of these issues in order to spur development.
And my actual final final is, you know, in the text, it talks about accessory dwelling units and, and, you know, Google Earth is just remarkable. And we have some tremendously huge lots, deep, deep lots. And I don't know, maybe it would be worthwhile to talk to the residents about if this is something they want on their, on their property. And I imagine, I mean, we need to look at arena numbers too and see how creative we can be in meeting that and how our zoning, what barriers we have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? All right, any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. All right, if you would, please come to the lectern and tell us your name, and then fill out a form after and give it to the city clerk.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't even see this when I walked in.
That's okay. Go ahead and tell us your name, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, my name is Robin Smith, and I'm just a little confused about this. So you're saying that this person already purchased that plot of land that's in Grand Terrace and Colton?
Yes, that property is already, it's already purchased, yes.
Okay. And in order for the city to get this grant, we have to work with the developer, right?
No. That's one of our options.
Okay, so you guys can just apply for it and get it and not use it specifically for that guy, right? All right, cool. Because I was like, what if he only builds that Colton part?
Okay. Now, remember, this isn't a town hall question and answer. And so, really, this is your turn to speak and give us your opinion.
Well, I'm just trying to understand.
And if you have questions, we'll do a wrap-up after, okay?
Okay.
So if you would, please just go ahead and let us know what you're thinking. And any questions that come out during that time, we'll keep track of them, and then we'll answer after.
All right, that sounds great.
Thank you.
If you were to use that money, if you got it, to put in parking spaces, would you meter them? How would this help the residents? Like, Cage Park, yeah, 100%, build that up. That's, was a beautiful piece of land, and now it's just kind of like sad. But putting in additional parking spaces, who's going to maintain those? Just the city? And where are we going to get the money to maintain that? Are we always going to be able to apply for this grant? Are you going to put in those parking meters? And if you put in those parking meters, how much are those going to cost? Are those going to go up annually? Like, whoa, this sounds like you want to build a business, but you want us to pay for those businesses. There's a reason why when someone opens a business, there has to be parking for them. All right, that's all, and I forfeit the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. If you would, please just fill out a form and give it to the city clerk, just so we have record. Thank you so much. All right. Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back to staff for a minute here to redirect on the questions that Ms. Smith brought up. And with respect to what this item's about, what it has to do with parking, and what you had in mind when you were looking at parking district, would it be parking meters and all that?
Sure, Mayor. And so, when we talk about a parking district, we're talking about looking at parcels that, if they were developed, would be underparked. And we're looking at areas surrounding, the areas that are overparked. And so, what happened is there would be a sharing of parking spaces. And so, let's say, for example, if we take the corner of Barton and Mount Vernon, and we look at the old former Mr. TV video. If they wanted to develop that site, they would be required to have probably about 22 parking spaces. They probably only have 15 in its current format. If you go across the street, you'd see where the grocery outlet is going, but there's a lot of parking in that, in that facility. And so, we would develop a parking district would be one option. But then usually it's in a 15, I'm sorry, a 500-feet radius. And so, then they would, they'd work out an agreement where they would be, they could share that, share that parking. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't involve any metering. It would involve an agreement, a shared agreement for people to join, people who have extra parking to join the parking district, and people who want the extra parking to pay for the rental or lease spots on the other side.
Okay, so the value to the business with the additional spots is that they would receive a lease payment or a rental payment from those that need the extra parking?
That, or through a city-initiated parking district, where the city actually brokered the parking spaces.
Okay. Councilmember Allen? Nothing? Okay. As far as Cage Park, would this be us looking at the city purchasing that park and turning it into a park? What were you looking at with reference to the park?
What this grant is, it's predominantly, so with Cage Park, you would look at, so with the grant's primary goal, let me go back to the, so it's to look at your zoning issues, your environmental analysis, specific plans, or anything that expedite development. So if you were looking at, if you had a project or a specific plan for Cage Park, you could absolutely utilize this money in order to do that. Or, as I've said before, the other property, the 13 acres. So it's any, your options are like, as Councilperson Robles said, you could do ADUs, you could do residential parking districts. It's really open to multiple opportunities.
All right, so when you write the grant, you just write the ideas that we might use the money for? You don't have to give specifics at that point?
You do need to be specific in terms of the type of activity you're going to be engaged in. And so, we are, we're working with a consultant, and what we'll end up doing is we'll be sitting down with the consultant. I will share the listed items that I've gotten today, and we will look at what would be deemed best and most advantageous for the city based on the ideas that we have, that we've gathered here today from the council.
Okay. Any further input for the City Manager? Anybody would like to make a motion on this item? Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, I recommend approving the Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Submit the SB2 Grant Application in the Amount of $160,000.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Economic Development Commercial Signage Loan Agreement with Tayun Incorporated for Grocery Outlet Property in the Amount of $50,000. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So on October 9, 2018, the City Council approved the list of eligible projects for the use of bond proceeds. Including the list of eligible projects is the Barton Road Sign Program, an economic incentive loan program to enhance commercial signage along the city's commercial corridor, such as Barton Road. Staff recommended that the council commit $100,000 for the program, and the council did approve that recommendation. On November 13, 2018, the City Council approved City of Grand Terrace Economic Development Commercial Sign Program. That program includes administrative guidelines and applications to assist property owners interested in accessing up to $50,000 in capital for commercial signage. The premise is that the enhanced sign advertising will increase sales taxes in businesses, and the additional revenue will be used to repay the loan. The loan may be repaid over a five-year period. 100% of the increased sales tax increases would go toward repayment of the loan. So in this particular case, the grocery outlet is estimated to generate between $12,000 and $22,000 annually in terms of sales tax. And so, with that calculation completed by our sales tax consultant, HDL, we, staff believes that this would be an appropriate use for the, for the sign program. Give example, what grocery outlet wants to do is they, they're going to have their additional signs here on the building, but they'd also like to have some signs out here on Barton Road, and then here again on Mount Vernon. And so, this would be a picture of their, of one of their signs. And this sign, I believe, would be on Barton Road. And there's also a place for additional businesses and sign. And the second sign is on Mount Vernon, and once again, there'd be additional space for this. So what happened is the center actually is getting about $3.2 million worth of improvements internally and externally. And so, the sign, the signs that we have before you today is about $53,000. And so, what the loan program calls for is for the business owner or the property owner to put in 20% of the overall value of the program. And so, she's got some other services besides the $53,000 in sign. So that coupled with an additional $7,000 would meet the requirements for the loan program. And how the loan program works is that because these were bond proceeds for, they were earmarked for economic development and other redevelopment activities, the $50,000 that we'll be utilizing will be basically the seed money to help start the program. The way the program is currently set up with the council, unless it otherwise wants to be modified, is the $50,000 that coming out of this particular program, the revenue from the sign program will not be going back into the sign program, but will be going into the city's general fund. And that's how that process would work. And once the funds have been depleted, the council could at some point in time re-up that, those funds if we had additional bond proceeds or with general fund proceeds. So with that, Mayor, I think the recommendation is that direct staff to prepare and negotiate an economic development commercial signage loan program with Teagan for $50,000, and direct staff to submit the loan agreement in the City Council for approval. In addition to that, one of the actions that the property owner has to do is ensure that they complete all the permitted requirements for the sign before they can actually, before we actually come back to the council for approval.
Will this go through Planning Commission?
I believe it. I believe it, yes, it'll have to do a sign program, so it will go to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
How many loans can the city put out at one time? I mean, if we voted to put 100,000 in there and we have two property owners that borrow 50K each, is that it? No more property owners or business owners can borrow from us to put a sign up?
That is correct unless you go back and readjust some of your proceeds from your bond proceeds that you earmarked in order to move that to this particular program.
How many loans have we made since we've had this program?
This will be the first one, sir.
Is that the actual, what the sign's going to look like?
Yes, sir.
That's ugly. That's a boring sign. Can we do any better than that? Your pictures, sample pictures you have in your presentation are nicer than that. That's a boring sign. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. That's not an issue tonight, though. That'll go through the sign code, planning process?
Absolutely, to ensure that it meets certain.
And if they believe that it's ugly, then they'll ask them to make adjustments, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, could you please vote again? Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. Our next item is request for future agenda items by the city council. And tonight, we have two requests. Both are by Councilmember Robles. The first is a review of the city's unfunded pension liability. Councilmember Robles, did you want to say a few words on that before motioning for that?
Sure. When we provided some more funding for Sheriff's overtime, we took some of it for, that was to pay the childcare's unfunded liability. But we haven't had the promise discussion yet on the general employees' unfunded liability. And so I just thought it'd be important to have that in the schedule. And after this was done, the newspaper reported about the state doing a stress test on all the cities. I haven't been able to read Grand Terrace's yet, but this is obviously a big issue.
Right, so that's your motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. And the second item is the city's current reserves policy?
Yes. I just thought it'd be, to do a quick exercise about the two months and whether we have the possibility of creating a deeper reserve.
Okay, so you're motioning to bring that back. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. And we will move to City Manager Communications. Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. So Mayor, there was something mentioned tonight by, I think, multiple councilmembers that talked about what a great city this is in terms of volunteerism and spirit. And so now we ask you to volunteer yet again, residents of Grand Terrace. We have, as most of the residents know, that our city parks are closed in the evening, and they close at dusk. And so most of the parks are actually closed by the residents of Grand Terrace. And so we were actually in need of having some of our parks closed. We have two, we have some immediate openings at the Fitness Park, the Dog Park, Richard Rollins Park, and Veterans Freedom Park. And so we encourage residents, and usually what happens is you're not really required to do it every night. You're required to do it maybe on the weekend if you're available, or once or twice a week. So we encourage you to sign up and be a part of that program. It's really a way to get out and meet your neighbors and join in the fun and help closing the parks. Also, one of the biggest events that we have in Grand Terrace is coming forward on December 5, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., the tree lighting ceremony. At 6:30 p.m., the tree will be lit. Ice skating for $5 per person. I think ice skating actually starts at 4 o'clock. So, and it's the largest rink ever that we've had in the city. So it's double the size, and it could be like 45 people ice skating at the same time. Now, granted, I have to say that it's a skating rink. There's not really ice, but it looks like it, okay? And so we encourage you to come out and join us over at Azure Hills on December 5. And you also start to see this week, all of our holiday decorations start to go up. You'll see them at the intersections and on the light poles. You'll start to see the city start to make its holiday transformation. Also, the 42nd Annual Birthday Potluck is coming up on December 9 at 6:00 p.m. in the community room. With that, Mayor, that completes my information.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that, we will recess to close session. But before we do that, I will remind you that our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, December 8, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So tonight, we recess to close session. We have one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 to potential cases. So thank you to all of you who have come out tonight, and we are in recess.
Madam Mayor, one correction, it's December 10.
December 10. Our next council meeting is December 10. I took a guess. I was thinking our party's on the 9th. So our party is the day before the council meeting, and then we will come in on the 10th. Thank you for the correction, Mr. City Attorney. We are in recess. We will reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session, conference with real, let me start over. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. I was really wanting to do real property negotiations. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 to potential cases. There are no reportable actions. Council did give staff direction. So we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, December 10 at 6:00 p.m. right here. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned. Thank you.